Yes, should have.
Let's talk about litter laws.
Dennis, nice to meet you. I'm Joe. I work for Shannon and Shannon. Thank you for coming. We appreciate you. Really? Okay. I want to know what you guys say.
Oh, hi. How do you?
Did you get a seat? Did you get a seat?
No, I'll get in there.
I was just mentioning, oh, here we go. I did. I got a ticket.
What about Derrick? Rex? All right, we have called the meeting to order. If you would, please stand for prayer and the pledge of belief. It's placed. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank for this day and all many blessings. We thank you once again for allowing us to come together as a council. We pray that we do everything in accordance with our will. We pray for sick, especially the ones that we know, and we pray to restore them back. They much wanted help. We pray for the families who are lost, love and comfort them as only you know how. We pray for country, men and women that serve it, that you put your hand around them, especially the ones on former soul around them that come and say this out. Best you forgive us our sins, Christ knows the number. Amen. Chief Smith, will you pledge your allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Call the board, Mr. Smith.
Augur McLeod.
Present.
Augur McDowell.
Present.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Present.
Augur Melvin.
Here.
Augur Langford.
Here.
Augur Manter.
Here.
Augur Smith.
Our president will do now before me, so we will proceed on with the approval of the minutes of last month's meeting.
Some more.
Notion made by Augur John Clough. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Augur Bill Lender. Any discussion? Our fourth motion, I don't understand. Hi.
Hi.
I oppose. Lots I. Notion passed. Just a reminder, just for the general public. If we do get into discussions, I will ask you to please push your button so it is clear that it is broadcasting out. It is better. Thank you. Additions or deletions. I do have a resolution from our attorney, Mr. Andre Griffin, on some new laws that has passed the state of Tennessee. Actually, it's already over. My bad. I just got it today. Never mind that. Ex. Act. So I do not have any additions or deletions to add to the agenda. Does anyone else have any? Okay, here none. We'll accept the agenda as is. No old business. So we will go to item number one, new business downtown revalidation. Mr. Gene Gant, Ms. Shannon Cantrell.
Right. Start off with a quick update on our construction projects from Ray Evans, our consultant, who's working on those, but he couldn't be here, so give me a report to give. First of all, our sidewalk project, the multiple access grant, the final right-of-way documents have been approved, reviewed by T. Doc. And they want to meet sometime in Davidson after the 17th to do a final review of the project. The courthouse project, we did have plans already approved for that. They were sent to T. Doc for review. There was some question about existing handicap, we're adding some things of that nature, but that's going forward as well. The South Church Street Grant, the A R C grant we call it out. We left the biz last week, but there was some concern over the coordination of the contractors and twinning plates and overcome and et cetera. So there's going to be another meeting on that. Those bids were canceled and will be rebid. The next one is the Cedar and Little Streets. There was a grant there for improvements, and that has been approved and grant documents are being prepared. And then a TBA investment grant. The consultant's visited the site last month, and we'll know before our next meeting here whether or not we've been successful with that. So as a result of, property is now available for a T M E C D site development grant. Any questions on that that I can't answer? Initially, I wanted to tell you that we've got another concert planned. This one is August 19th. It's pre-concert with a Greek ricochet and a young lady by the name of Dolly, and she played with the Justin Dean Spain. So that's on the 19th. Any questions about that?
Yeah, well, so it's non-Dolly Hardin. So, Dolly Hardin.
This is lesser expensive, obviously.
And Justin Dean's is a separate payment, so there'll be three of them.
Three, okay. Dolly's her own. She's on show.
She's on her own. That's right. All right. Any questions for Mr. Gant? Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Cantrell?
I don't have anything this time. I think I gave you plenty less time, and I'll spare you the 15-minute talk.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Item number two is Mr. Dennis Tullman from the Department of Tourism. Call him, Mr. Tullman. If you'll hit the button there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for having me. My name is Dennis Tullman. I'm the chief customer officer with the Tennessee Department of Tourist Development. And I'm out visiting all 95 counties singing the, talking about the business of tourism. I believe you guys understand, you guys understand tourism. We're going to talk a little bit. I've got a little road show. I'm going to cut it really short and hit the highlights for you. But as you know, Governor Lee is a businessman, and rural Tennessee is in his heart, and I work for Commissioner Mark Yezel. And Commissioner Yezel was former president, CEO, his family owned purity dairies. So Commissioner Yezel is a businessman, but he also understands marketing and branding. And we're really focused on the business and the economics of tourism and what it means to rural Tennessee. We just announced our 2022 economic impact numbers for the state of Tennessee. Governor Lee and Commissioner Yezel made the announcement that Tennessee set an all-time record of $27.5 billion of direct visitor spending across the state of Tennessee. That was a 14% increase from the prior year. That was $24.2 billion. And we jumped from 14th in the nation to number 11 in the nation in direct visitor spending, competing against states like California and Texas and Florida and New York. And jumped from 14 to 11. We're ecstatic about the movement of visitor spending. But here's what it means to Tennessee and Tennessee. And people ask me all the time, and people from out of state say, how do y'all get away without a state income tax? Why do y'all not have a state income tax? And it's because of the impact of sales tax and from the hospitality and tourism sectors. $1.76 billion was delivered to the state budgets out of the impact of direct visitor spending, out of hospitality and tourism sectors. $1.76 billion backed up from the hospitality assets, the restaurants, the hotels, the recreation assets. And it delivered that type of money to the budgets, and the same thing happens in rural communities. The economic impact from direct visitor spending affects your local dollars, and I've left you guys a summary page, and we'll talk about that in just a second. I'm going to skip, I'm going to go pretty quick here, but Tennessee was on a 10-year roll of economic growth in visitor spending. 10-year straight growth, and it was unprecedented growth. We have 75% growth in direct visitor spending from 2010 to 2019, third highest increase in the nation. Tennessee is on fire with visitor spending. We have the assets. When you look at all that Tennessee has, from Memphis to Mountain City and all of the things we have in the middle, Tennessee is growing drastic greatly. And then when you think about the international flights, the National International Airport, we were the fastest-growing international market from 2016 to 2019. And the direct result of those international flights and the international companies that our friends at Economic Development have been recruiting to Tennessee. But we all know what happened when COVID hit. COVID hit, and everything slowed down. The direct visitor spending stopped. This chart right here shows you. We saw a $303 million reduction in state budget. State revenues dropped $303 million out of the hospitality tourism sector. One thing COVID showed us was the importance of discretionary travel and its contribution to state and local budgets. It showed us that discretionary travel is an important piece of the budget, and we're out singing about the impact of discretionary travel to our local communities. Here's the good news. By 2021, we're 99% recovered, and the 2022 number that I showed you, we are fully recovered. We have exceeded it, and 2022 was a record year. That $27.5 billion was an all-time record. We have fully recovered from the impact. But we learned some lessons in COVID. And here's a message that we really like to sing. Because of the direct impact to the state budget on direct visitor spending, every household pays $755 less per household to receive the same amount of services because of the impact of visitation and tourism. It impacts budgets, and it impacts local budgets, and it impacts state budgets, and we understand it's very important. I'm going to take one second before I wrap up, and I left a slide on your page or at your desk. You all have this slide. And this is a summary of your direct visitor spending. Couple of highlights I'll point out there. The bar chart about middle way on the left-hand column of our chart shows your overall direct visitor spending. And it is growing, and I will compare 2019 to 2021. You had a 24.7% growth from 2019 to 2021 in Overton County. That's great. If my 401K was growing at 24.7%, I would be happy and consider it successful. It is not. But your lodging hospitality sector is growing, and that's a direct, we're seeing that coming out of COVID, that folks realize the great beauty of the natural resources and the great outdoors and the beauty of our small towns, and people are coming and visiting, and you can see that in your growth numbers. And I won't go through everything other than there's a number on the right-hand side that every household in Overton County pays less in county and city property taxes because of the impact of visitation, and it affects local budgets and it affects state budgets. And Mayor told me I had 10 minutes. I'm going to stop there. Our department does a lot of things. We are coming back to your town on August the 15th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Our rural outreach team is coming, and we're going to do what's called a rural roadmap session. We're going to bring in industry partners, people that are in the hospitality tourism business. If you're a restaurant operator, short-term rental, Airbnb. If you're in, as a leader, we want you to come. We'll give you an invitation. But you're going to have a chance to guide the roadmap of where you would like to see hospitality travel and where our department goes and assist your team at the chamber, how we help take you on the roadmap that you guys would like to see. We take a 2025, 30-year look at where you want to go and how can we align state resources to help you get to where you want to go. There's a little thing up the road here called Dale Hollow Lake, and I just met with the county commissioner before I come to you. And I plan to see that I think there's a conversation. If you've ever visited the Smoky Mountains and the visitors in the Smoky Mountains, does anyone care or even know what county they visited? No, nobody. When you go to Smoky Mountains, you tell your friends, I went to the Smoky Mountains. Although you went to Blount County, Sevier County, and probably Cock County, no one really cares. A visitor does not care about county lines. And so I almost believe that Dale Hollow Lake is such a legendary iconic lake that if we could ever have a conversation with Clay County and Overton County and Pickett County and talk about creating an image and a brand that you guys have amazing restaurant assets here. You may not have a marina, but you may have some restaurants, and you may have some Airbnbs that they do not have. I think there's synergy with getting around the table with a lot of people and talking about an amazing asset that you have and how you can, how you can help your economy by growing that rural asset. But anyway, we'll be back August 15th, and we're going to lead a really robust 20- or 30-year look around visitation for your community, and I hope you guys can make it. I'll stop there. Any questions? I know I'll talk fast, but Mayor got me really scared while I came in. He said, don't get the gavel, because I'll hook you in a second. So, Mayor, I appreciate you working me in on a short note. He found out I was already in town for another meeting, and he's supposed to be in here squeezing your agenda.
Job well done. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Dennis Tullman?
Just know that our team is connected with Shannon and her team. We have a division manager, Ashley DeRosick, that works your market every day from our department. She manages grants and all of the assets of Nashville. Ashley's in contact with your team, and we work daily and weekly with them, making sure you're getting the resources you need. So just know you have a great team, and our team is connected with your team. So thanks for what you do, and that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, item number three, we have an A and a B update on the police department chief, Ray Smith. And then the B part is the purchase of a truck.
Thank you, Mayor. Board, I'll give you an opportunity.
Ray, can you push your button, please?
Sure. Give me an opportunity to speak to you on behalf of the UCD grant that we just closed out. With the work that they've done, we was awarded, we was awarded $328,592. And this morning, we was able to buy 10 units, not used units, brand-new Dodge Chargers. I hope you got to see them out. And their view, they're under warranty, that it didn't cost the city a dime to get. We just had to follow in place and file the right paperwork. And with the hard work of the grant folks, they did this, I mean, brought it to our attention. So we was capitalized on that. Also, we took the old, the old units and old equipment stuff, and we sold it. We had three sales, and in those three sales, we totaled up $210,543. We used it to purchase equipment, gates, radios, dash, get it stickered up and all. After we done all that, we also, we kind of looked around at the city police department, had an opportunity to do a sale. And in the sale that we had, the second part of the, like the break-in extension, we had enough to kind of spread it out just a little bit. And I would like to ask the board to allow me to purchase the fire department a first responder vehicle that to get their first responders to have a new vehicle. Also, we've always had used vehicles. We appreciate what we did have. But it's a great opportunity to pass on the wealth to their fire department, which responds to a lot of calls with us. We do, they help us do a lot of things with us. And I thought that would be a good little reach out if the board would say so. The truck's also under state bid. We don't have to worry about running out. Try to go through a lot of things. There are the state bids. It's already ready. Took care of, and it would also be paid out of the money that we raised by selling old units and old equipment and old stuff that we need to get rid of, some assets that we didn't have to have anymore. So I'm asking the commission from the board to do that also.
Ray, what was the cost?
The cost of the truck is $35,000 flat. It's a very new truck. It's a short model Ford over, but it's four-wheel drive and rugged. Very nice truck. It was bought here local, so we didn't go far off the front line of the truck, which are a local, our brand-new dealership. I mean, you manage that right down here. Spoke with them what we needed to find, and they found it under the state bid and got it in.
So the money that we have sold at the sales will certainly cover this. It wouldn't be, the real players not coming out of drug fines, money that is in the general fund. The money that was sold at the sale just went back into the general fund. So as long as that is under state bid and that dealership is under the state bid, then we don't have to edit out this own state Tennessee purchase vehicle. So that's what Ray was saying. As long as that is correct, then I see no reason that we shouldn't purchase this vehicle. It's really a utility. Fire department will use it, but the police department will use it. We all work together. Who knows, the street park may have used one day, but anyway, so the funds are there, and it's up to the board.
Make a motion that we make the purchase, and I'd like to thank the police department for sharing the will.
Motion made by Augur David Langford, your second.
I'll second. But I don't hear any questions.
Second by Augur Bill Lender.
So what you're saying is the money that went back into the general funds from the auction at the garage?
Well, there's a couple, there's a couple auctions that we had. They had one from, we did have a total auction from C. Roach. They also had, I believe, ran online.
Yeah, and, yeah, 2022 online gov deals, we raised $126,977. We also had a secondary sale on gov deals in '23 that raised $55,381. Then we had a local garage sale down here at the city here that raised $28,185. And the total amount was $210,543. Then after that, after we actually purchased the truck, well, and also in our grant that we did on UCD, where we put on the new front so we can isolate folks who are coming into the building, we used also $1,000 of that money to help finish up that project and to close all the, the consignment grant out. So as a balance at this time with any other spendings we've had, we've got $97,193.49, and that is after the $35,000 purchase of a truck.
So we have a good deal?
So we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Questions for Chief? Broke off, Mr. Smith.
Augur Langford.
Yes.
Augur Melvin.
Yes.
Augur Melvin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Augur Langford.
Yes.
Augur McLeod.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. Motion passed. So we will, anything on the update of the police department, and we talked about the purchase of the truck, and that's going to item number four. But before I do, do you have anything else from those two subjects?
I do. We have closed out, and we'll have a closed-out meeting with the lady that's over the grant, the finished office, unfinalized paperwork on there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Item number four is memorandum of understanding over the county board of education and the police department chief, Ray Smith. Close.
Yes, sir. This memorandum of understanding is, we are writing, we are writing in grant, and through Bill Lee, he has pushed out some money out there to help us fund our SRO program. The SRO program has been, it's a major task between the school system, and it's been a task between the city of Livingston. He has come up with an idea that will allow us up to $75,000 per officer to put into the school system and the state department is going to cover those wages. It is a direct wage that is given to the city of Livingston to allow us to put security into our schools, and we always have, and we always would. But it helps us take a little bit of that burden off the city of Livingston. And the upper-cumbling developed district is also helping us write that grant. And what they say, we have to have a memorandum of understanding that both the board allow us to keep applying for that grant each year to help us keep security inside the schools.
Andre, did you have an opportunity to review the?
I did. My only comment was.
Can you stand up and talk to the podium, please?
I did have a chance to review it. My only comment was that this is, of course, is the state minimum requirements to qualify for this grant. So if we want the grant, we have to comply with this MOU. Now, there were some revisions as far as who had authority to control and make decisions in the schools that may be conflicted with our earlier interlocal agreement with the county. And what I told Chief Smith was, if you want the grant, you have to comply with this, and the best thing to do is just do an amendment with the, with the county to the interlocal agreement to make sure it complies with the grant requirements.
Also, I spoke with Dr. Holman with the school system, and they said whatever provisions we need to do to make that grow on. He was more willing to look at the board, maybe make a vote for it.
Thank you, Chief Smith. So we just need a motion to accept this memorandum of understanding. Like the attorney says, he's reviewed it, sees no problem with it, and it'd be a good way for us to have pay, which they're already paying, paying out state NCSROs in the school system. But they both made a jump on it that was already budgeted.
I move to accept this memorandum of understanding.
Motion made by Augur John Clough. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson. Any discussion?
I mean, yes, I was ahead of the pre-report.
We have three, sir.
Come to the podium, there. Any more questions? How many SROs do we have?
We have three. We have three positions to do. We have with, and that gets the high school, the middle school, and A. X. Robbins. And we are extending it out to Bill Lee's office through the developed district to see, make sure that Rich Academy, which is another one, and say, see if they won't qualify also, and that'll give us a vote.
What about, you have enough officers come to this, this town, or are you still looking for? What about, you have enough officers come this time, or are you still looking for?
We are still in the process of looking for, not only local officers for SROs, and everybody's kind of just looking to see what's going on. It is not, I mean, it's a call. It's what it is. It's a call to the community to be an SRO. It's a call to the community to be a police officer. We are looking for those women and women that can make a good stand with us and protect our citizens of Houston.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Any more discussion? Brokaw Public Affairs.
Alderman Neldner.
Yes.
Alderman Lender.
Yes.
Passmate Box.
Yes.
Alderman Lender.
Yes.
Alderman Cluff.
Yes.
Alderman Lander.
Yes.
Motion passed, and thank you, Chief. Item number five, new laws in Tennessee. Attorney, city attorney Andre Rick.
Thank you. A brief legislative update. There's some new laws in the state of Tennessee with respect to public meetings. The legislature has passed, that recently went into effect. The first one is Public Chapter Number 213. This will be codified at TCA Section 8-44-112. This one entered effect on April 25th of this year. It says that at least 48 hours prior to a meeting, a local government legislative body, such as the city council, shall make available to the public at no charge an agenda, the agenda for the upcoming meeting in a place accessible to the public. Now, let me go on to describe that a place accessible to the public includes an official website. It's my understanding you already do that, correct? 48 hours before the meeting. All right, so you're already in compliance. It also says that you have to have reasonably detailed itemization of what is to be discussed or voted on at the meeting. You clearly do that, and it says that you can add agenda items after that 48-hour period as long as they weren't withheld to keep them from the public to the agenda. So nothing to change here as long as you're already doing that. The second one is Public Chapter 300. This will be codified at TCA in Section 8-44-113. This went into effect July 1st. This deals with public comment periods. It says a governing body shall, for each public meeting, reserve a period for public comment to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on matters that are germane to the items on the agenda for the meeting. And as it says, when the public comment period has to occur, it could occur at the beginning, it could occur at the end, or after each individual item, so you have discretion in that regard. You also have discretion to impose some reasonable restrictions on the public comment period, how long a comment period would last, how long each person could talk, the number of speakers, or we could even require that people request to be added to the list to make public comment at the meeting if you wanted to do that. In that case, you have to publish a notice for the meeting and explain how you get added to the list if you wanted to speak at the meeting. This doesn't apply to any disciplinary hearing or any meeting where there's no action items on the agenda. I prepare a model resolution for your consideration. This can be adopted as written, can be adopted with changes, or it can be somebody go back and start over on it, carry either way. But generally applies, it adopts by law that generally applies with these legislative enactments, even though you are already in compliance. It says generally that the town council reserves a period for public comment, provide an opportunity to comment on matters that are germane to issues on the agenda. Generally, the public comment period will not exceed a total of one hour unless it's permitted by the mayor as the presiding officer or based upon a motion and a vote. Speakers generally limited to three minutes per person, unless extended likewise. And notwithstanding any of that, people speaking at the meeting aren't entitled to engage in conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or imparts the proceedings and all that. The next item for agendas, it says that the town Livingston will make public, if no charge, the agenda of any upcoming meeting that's open to the public no later than 48 hours prior to the meeting. It will be deemed available to the public if posted at the town hall and available on the official website, social media page, or is otherwise available to the public. So any, any place that's accessible to the public will comply. It will reasonably describe the matters to be deliberated or act on at a public meeting, but doesn't need to be so detailed as to identify every possible action that might be taken on a particular matter or topic. And notwithstanding any of that, after the 48-hour period, if there's any matter or topic that you deem urgent or emergent, it could be added to the agenda identified by a motion and a vote. This is, like I said, generally what you do now, but it's good practice to adopt a policy that complies with these new laws. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. This is one of these deals where we really don't have a choice. I mean, this law took effect July 1st, mandated by the state of Tennessee. And if it was adopted, and I guess if we didn't adopt it, we'd still be under the rule of that, but to enforce some practical measures, I think that I had Mr. Attorney to draft up this resolution that we can have, so.
Now, I will point out on the public comment portion of the resolution, it does not contain a restriction on the number of speakers or requirement that anybody sign up to be able to speak, so that's also available. Or any other reasonable restriction that you might want that is also available.
This board need a little bit more time. Like I said.
If we, I have a question. If we adopt this tonight, obviously see how it goes and everything, at a later time, we could amend this regarding the number of speakers, duration of time, and so forth.
I would, sir.
Thank you.
And Alderman Cluff, I can put it back. We, if the board wishes to approve this tonight, I can put it back on the agenda for all this, with any amendments that the board would like to see to, if that's, if that's what you want. If there is no amendments that I'm going to just pass it.
Motion for.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson. Second by Alderman John Cluff. Any discussion? I'll forward the motion, let it know and say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, lightsight, motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Rick. Other business for the council? Here and done. Now, this is a bylaw that gives a public comment section, and one that wants to address any of the items that we have discussed on the agenda tonight. Here and done, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Vice Mayor Dodson. Your second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bill Linder. Any discussion? I'll forward the motion, let it know and say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, lightsight, for adjournment.